Good evening and welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, June 18th, 2020. Welcome to everyone who's joining us from home. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Call please.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Ms. Atkins.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Abou Osley.
Here.
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Ms. Goodell.
Here.
Mr. Stern.
Present.
Thank you. Thank you. Before we begin, I just want to review the procedure for the public making comments at these meetings while we are in this phase of not having the public in our city council chambers and participating from home. Anyone who wishes to comment on an agenda item, including any public hearings, may submit the comment to the city clerk by 4:00 PM on Thursday, on the Thursday of the meeting. And comments can also be heard during the meeting. During the meeting, members of the public can select the Q and A function and enter their name, address, and agenda item on which they'd like to comment during the appropriate They may use the hand raise feature in the Zoom program, and the city clerk will call on them to speak. You must give your name and address, otherwise you won't be able to speak at the meeting. Correct? Once you are unmuted, you will have five minutes to address the council on the topic. Please refrain from repeating what has been said before by either you or someone else. And please refrain from making personal comments or derogatory comments regarding individuals. Keep the comments as factual as possible. And everyone will have one opportunity to address the council. So those are the guidelines and rules that we'll be following for the time being on the public making comments to the council during these meetings when they're participating electronically. Okay? We will now proceed with the agenda. We have a proclamation. First proclamation, two proclamations. The first one is regarding Juneteenth, which is being presented this evening by council member Atkins. Sure. I don't believe we have anybody for... Oh, we do have Amal here, who is the liaison with the, the staff liaison with the Civil Rights Commission, and she can come forward and accept it. Make sure you wear your mask. Thank you.
My glasses are gonna fog, so we'll see how successful I am in this. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves in the Confederate Territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed two and one-half years in reaching African-Americans in the South and Southwestern United States. And whereas many slave owners continued to hold their slaves captive after the announcement and up to June 19th of 1865. Whereas June 19th became a symbolic date representing African-American freedom and has a special meaning to African-Americans. Whereas it is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. And whereas it is a day meant to educate and reflect. Now therefore, I, Collette Atkins, on behalf of Nick Abou Osley, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby declare June 19th, 2020, as Juneteenth.
Thank you, Collette. Okay, our second proclamation is one that I'm making, which is part of the emergency declaration proclamation. In order to streamline the process for Marion businesses during the COVID crisis, to be able to maintain a outdoor service area, to be able to serve their customers in an outdoor setting. And businesses have asked about this, and we're just trying to streamline the process on a temporary basis to allow those businesses to, the greatest chance to be successful and come through this crisis successfully, as well as to make their customers comfortable. So whereas I, Nicholas Abou Osley, Mayor of the City of Marion, issued an emergency declaration proclamation on March 21st, 2020, and whereas the businesses in the City of Marion have been complying with the orders of the governor relating to the reopening of restaurants, bars, retail, and other service-based businesses, and whereas due to the current social distancing guidelines, there has been an increased demand for outdoor service areas. And whereas the current procedure for approval of outdoor service areas requires council approval and can create delay of several weeks depending on when an application is received in relation to the city council meeting schedule. And whereas it would be in the best interest of the businesses and residents of the City of Marion to allow for expedited approval of temporary outdoor service areas, now therefore let it be known that pursuant to Iowa Code, Section 364.1 and Section 372.142, I Nicholas Abou Osley, Mayor of Marion, Iowa, hereby order and direct the following. Applications for temporary outdoor service areas received between June 15th, 2020 and November 1st, 2020 may be approved by the city manager. An approved temporary outdoor service areas must comply with the social distancing guidelines or any other guidelines or orders now in place or later ordered or enacted by the governor or by any controlling state or local authority. Any permit approved by this process shall not expire until December 31st, 2020. Nothing in this order is intended to amend, repeal, restrict, or otherwise modify or remove the requirements relating to the sale or service of alcoholic beverages by any participating business. All other state and local licensing or permitting requirements remain unchanged by this order. All other requirements, conditions, provisions, and processes currently in place for the approval of outdoor service areas remain unchanged by this order. This order shall remain in effect so long as the emergency declaration proclamation is in effect. Okay? At this time, we have a public forum, which is a time for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. Have we received any requests or comments from the public?
Lonnie Henderson commented with their name. Oh, hold on, it just came through. It'll be for the public forum at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Sorry, I was waiting for the topic, so.
Okay. So this, this time is for comments on topics that are listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. We don't have anyone commenting in this time?
No, not for this section.
Okay, we'll proceed to the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as follows. Items A1 through F6, Resolutions 28541 through 28560.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F6, Resolutions 28541 through 28560. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a comment on item number nine.
Go ahead.
Included in this item is talking about insurance benefits for the city employees. And I just might want to make a comment that city employees are getting one heck of a benefit with the cost of their health insurance only running at 10% to 12% of the city's total cost. So if you talk to any of your neighbors, there's very few, very few that are paying that low of a percentage. So one, I, I hope they certainly appreciate that benefit. But two, as time passes, as time goes on, whether or not we can maintain that lower percentage remains to be seen. So I just say, appreciate it while you have it. It's a heck of a benefit.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? I will note on the appointment of new members to the library board, item four, I did speak with each of those individuals, and I'm happy to make the recommendation. Any other comments? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro temp for the next section.
Mayor pro temp, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osley's abstention from voting. A discussion as follows. Includes items A1 through F1, Resolutions 28561 through 28565.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osley's abstention. Is there any comments or discussion on any of these items? None seen. All those in favor of passing the, approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That is approved with one abstention. The meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve Resolution Number 28566, approving an amendment to the Well-Being Program Contract with Health Solutions, replacing Schedule A.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28566, approving amendment to the Well-Being Program Contract with Health Solutions and replacing, replacing Schedule A. All those in favor of Resolution Number 28566, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28567, approving the fiscal year 2019 through 2020, operating budget transfers.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28567, approving the fiscal year 2019, 2020, operating budget transfers. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28567, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. This time, we have a public hearing regarding the proposed designation of the Echo Hill Road Urban Renewal Area. The public hearing is now open. Ms. Al-Taher, are you giving a presentation, or is it Lon? Okay, go ahead.
Staff is recommending designation of the areas shown in, or highlighted in the map as an urban renewal area. This designation will give the city the flexibility of using tax increment financing as a way to fund infrastructure improvements that are needed to support development in the area. This action is consistent with both the comprehensive plan and the city's economic development So the urban renewal plan will include public infrastructure. The first one is the improving the intersection of Echo Hill and Albert Net Road. This is to make the intersection, give it the capacity to handle the traffic generated by two schools east of the intersection. Also, to fund a traffic study on Albert Net Road at the Oak Ridge School. This is to determine if a turn lane is needed. The plan also includes a proposed regional stormwater detention basin in the location highlighted in yellow on the map. This detention is to support development in the area. It will be needed to absorb the impact of those development and to protect properties downstream of those developments. Also, the plan includes a program of administration and professional support, four-year program. Do you have any questions?
Okay. We'll save council questions until the actual agenda item, the vote. So at this time, do we have any comments either in favor or in opposition to this measure from the public?
I have not received any.
Okay. And I'll ask members of the city manager's staff if we've received any comments outside this meeting.
We have not.
Please note that for the record. I'm assuming nothing has been received in, as we've been speaking here. Okay.
Yep.
All right, we will close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28568 to declare necessity and establish an urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.4 of the Code of Iowa and to approve urban renewal plan and project for the Echo Hill Road Urban Renewal Area.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28568, declaring necessity and establishing an urban renewal area pursuant to Section 4.3.4, 403.4 of the Code of Iowa, and approving urban renewal plan and project for the Echo Hill Road Urban Renewal Area. Discussion or questions for Amal? Yes?
I had a few. What, there were a few, a few items listed. In fact, Terrell, could you go back, I think just one slide? Two slides? Yes. What, no, yeah, that one. The last, the second bullet, the Administration and Professional Support Program. What types of items are in that program?
Will be administrative cost and professional, like legal and support for economic development.
But just for that area? That's what that's called?
The, like, legal and administrative usually will allocate those to the different districts based on the activities in the district. For this, for this district, there are three projects. Will be, all the costs will be allocated to the district.
Okay. And so do the other urban renewal areas that we've designated also have that same program?
Yes.
Okay. I just hadn't noticed that before. And then my second question is, obviously, we decide yes or no. What's, what's the downside of voting yes? Because it seems to make sense. What, what's the negative, if any, of voting for this?
For the city?
Yeah.
It's a benefit to the city.
You've made that argument. I'm just wondering if there was a devil's advocate, what would a downside be? Are there none?
None.
Okay.
Okay, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28568, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 20-08, providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the Echo Hill Road Urban Renewal Area pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. This is the initial consideration.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of Ordinance Number 20-08, providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the Echo Hill Road Urban Renewal Area. All those in favor of approving Ordinance Number 20-08, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 28569, approving public facility protective equipment policy.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28569, approving public facility protective equipment policy. All those in favor of Resolution Number 28569, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to receive and file job description for IT support consultant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive and file the job description for IT support consultant. Discussion. Yes, Ms. Goodell.
Yes, it doesn't have to do with the content, but more the process. I'll be abstaining on everything that has been added to the agenda since after our meeting on Tuesday, because I have not had time to review anything that's been provided to us since then.
Just a question for, I guess, Lon. By, by receiving and filing this, are we approving anything, or we're just, we're just accepting it into the record?
This does create the job description.
Okay.
The council doesn't actually have to take formal action to do that. It can be handled administratively, but we have customarily done it of receiving and filing as the city council, so that you're aware it's happening. And then the next action is tied to it, because you do have to establish the pay band for the position. So without the job description, that would be very difficult to do.
I understand. And the reason why this was added, and it can't wait till the next meeting, that this, I guess, this and the corollary item that's next to it?
This is a budget position that was anticipated to be a change that took place with the fiscal year on July 1st. And so if we were to wait, we'd be into, two weeks into July already before the change could potentially take place. It's a new classification that's being added to take an existing position and make it the same grade as the existing network manager position. And I can't remember the other position that's in IT that puts them all at the same grade. So it's a budgetary change, and it's just one of those things that I think with HR being vacant, fell through the cracks.
Okay, so help me again understand the, the reason why it has to be done before the new fiscal year?
The, it's tied to a potential change that would take place for an existing staff person at the change of the fiscal year. And Beth, being her meticulous self and wanting everything to be dotted and crossed in proper order, asked that it be taken, addressed before the beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, sorry. I have one for the city manager. Lon, I know that we had talked about several other positions, job titles and things, and I thought we had kind of strapped that to the compensation study as well, too. So without getting off topic and understanding and asking where are we at with that, I'll come back and say, is this, do you feel that this is still prevalent, that we should move forward with this without having that study completed and, and us rolling this out across the entire city?
There are some positions that we've made some adjustments to, as we're still reviewing the recommendations for the compensation study. I do expect that to return to the city council, but we really need that professional HR help to be able to bring that one forward and do it coherently. Since this is an internal comparability issue, that it's not going above or below existing pay grades, it's just making it level with other existing pay grades, I'm comfortable with moving forward with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay, we'll vote on the motion to receive and file the job description for IT support consultant. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. All those abstaining, say aye.
Aye.
We have one abstention, and the motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28570, amending the non-bargaining pay schedule to include the addition of IT support consultant.
Second. It has been moved by councilmember Goodell, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem, to approve Resolution Number 28570, amending the non-bargaining pay schedule to include the addition of IT support consultant. None? Okay, we will vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28570, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. All those abstaining, please say aye.
Aye.
We have one abstention, and the motion to approve Resolution Number 28570 has been approved.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the following Hold Harmless Agreement. Cocktails and Company Bands in Parking Lot, 619 through 620, 73 through 74, 717 through 718, 731 through 81, 814 through 815, 828 through 829, from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, 1625 Blair's Ferry Road, Marion. Cocktails and Company, 1625 Blair's Ferry Road.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve a Hold Harmless Agreement for Cocktails and Company Bands in the parking lot at 1625 Blair's Ferry Road.
I have a question.
No, go ahead. Yes.
Was this?
Member Brandt.
Was this for, I don't even know, Lon, I don't mind directing this view. Is this for Rachel, maybe? Is this for music from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM outside?
I believe so, yes.
Every weekend for the entire summer?
They, they had it, they requested every other week, yes.
It was every other week? And in that Hold Harmless, I breezed through it because it was added late. Was there security in place?
I think they requested it. Chief, can maybe you speak to that?
And the reason I ask is because there's been issue, there was an issue in the past with music at this location a few years ago.
Correct. We had an incident in 2018 that wound up with 17 officers having to go down there and break fights up. We had another large fight a few months after that. I went back and looked since 2018. We've had 435 visits to the bar. A lot of them were bar checks. But I went through and I found about 35 calls for fights, disturbances, parking, reckless driving, that type of thing. In the Hold Harmless, they asked, they said that they wanted two officers for security. I put in the contingencies, we would send no less than six, and I'm almost hesitant to do that.
So is it, do you have a recommendation on whether or not this should be approved?
I have concerns about the apartments in that area, that if you've got that many people gathered, I have concerns about the parking, because I don't believe they have adequate parking if they take up their that many people gathered, I have concerns about the parking because I don't believe they have adequate parking if they take up their entire lot, uh, that they're going to be parking in adjoining businesses. We've had instances in the past where we've had drug use and alcohol found in vehicles in the area, and I think you're, you're going to run into issues. And if you don't have the appropriate number of security people around or officers to control that part, I don't think we've got enough to control what would happen inside as well. So if you're asking me personally, no.
Steve, so a follow-up question. So if we approve this tonight, and obviously I think there's some concern by the majority of people on the city council, based upon, uh, the past experience, the cocktails has demonstrated, or the people there have demonstrated. If this was approved tonight and they start out of the gate and have any type of problems that are unwarranted and unacceptable, can this hold harmless be canceled?
I don't know that I can answer that. Yeah, wait, the, um, the reason to hold harmless like this comes to the city council is because of the noise waiver portion. Uh, but the city would have the ability to revoke the hold harmless.
Okay.
Alternatively, what the city council could do is if you have that level of concern, you don't have to approve the hold harmless for every event that they're asking for.
Okay. In the past, if I remember, besides the issues that, that have been mentioned, then we have complaints from residences also that could hear the music miles away and.
Yeah, I believe you're, uh, the initial event, they were well in excess of the, uh, limitations that are allowed in the sound ordinance. Uh, and the later event, I don't believe that was as much of an issue.
Yes, Councilmember Harper.
Isn't there a relatively new senior, uh, living, uh, complex in direct proximity, the north side of Blair's Ferry? Yes.
Yeah, I believe you're speaking of the Arbor, which is on the, would be a north and east of this location.
Yeah. But, uh, just so I, I'm clear, that, that facility is on the north side of Blair's Ferry? Yeah, okay. And it's set back way away, so, okay.
Just Councilmember Brandt, as I piggyback off your question, back when this happened, when, that the chief was talking about, there were phone calls from residents of that facility.
Okay.
Complaining about the noise at midnight, whatever time it was in the middle of the night.
Okay, it was operable at that time, the facility, yeah.
Councilmember Sternad.
Uh, yes, uh, chief, I'm here, the, um, hold harmless, I was just trying to pull it up on my maps here, states that they have permission from the property owner located adjacent across the road of Blair's Ferry Road. Um, I'm assuming for their overflow parking. I'm trying to, I'm trying to visualize where this is. This must be in that vacant parking lot next to the mortuary there. Thoughts, concerns with that? Obviously, we've got people running across the traffic on a Saturday. I guess I'm not familiar with have seen this in the past on their request.
Yeah, I, I would be concerned after dark of having people crossing the road, but again, depending on how many security people they had or how many officers they had.
Sure, okay.
I, and I will say the owner has been, during the bar checks, he has been responsive to the officers. I think things just sometimes get out of hand. But he, he, and I don't want to do anything to stifle a business. I know that restaurants and bars have had a hard time with the Corona virus. But it's up to you guys. If you want to do one and we see how it goes, and we'll work with them and see if we can't make it work for the community, I'm willing to do that, but that's, that's your call.
I guess I'd be more comfortable with something like that. Uh, yes, Councilmember Brandt.
So just to follow up on your comment earlier, how, uh, they requested two officers, but you said you'd rather have six?
Yeah.
Have you talked with the owner about paying for six officers versus two?
I've not. I put that on the contingent when we sent it back.
We don't know if they agree to that yet.
Right. And I can bring that next council.
We have the capacity to provide six officers.
We could do it. With, with advance notice, we can, we can make it work.
Councilmember Harper?
Yes, I, I would be in favor of an incremental approach. Let them have their first one, see how that goes. If there are no violations or difficulties with that, then, uh, that, uh, opens the gate for the second one. And if they're split or separated by, uh, two weeks, that gives also some time. If we have recommendations, they can adjust how they're conducting, uh, those affairs, too.
The first one is tomorrow?
Yes, and I just want to make, um, aware, the seven three seven four would be before the next council meeting. So they wouldn't be able to, or you wouldn't be able to approve that one. It would be too late at that point. Just making it, making you aware.
Yeah, I'd, I'd amend that suggestion to go to the first two. Tell them they're on a short leash and whatever comments or, or recommendations, contingencies need to be put on that, uh, they don't have any choice. I mean, they're on a short leash and they need to understand the city council is not going to be putting up with, uh, any significant concerns or issues from these events.
Correct.
Any comments from council members who have not had a chance to comment? Yes, go ahead, Collette.
Just a, a quick question. So it's tomorrow, right? And could we have six officers available tomorrow already? I feel like that might be a little bit of a challenge in itself.
It, it would be.
Yeah.
That quickly.
Right.
But I think the, again, the request was pretty broad, that I think they were trying to cover. I don't know if they've even got one lined up for tomorrow. I mean, I honestly don't know that.
Okay. But when we say contingent, that means, right, that they couldn't do it unless you were able to secure six officers. Okay. And I'm comfortable with the incremental approach as well, um, giving it a shot and see how it works. And if it doesn't work, then, right, we don't move forward with anymore, so.
Mayor, that was what I was just going to know, what Councilwoman Atkins brought up, is that, um, when the police chief puts a condition on that, it becomes a requirement of the hold harmless. If the business is not willing to comply with that, then the hold harmless is not granted. So when the staff or the council sets those conditions, it becomes mandatory. They're not given a choice.
Good. Yes.
So I have another question, sorry.
Go ahead.
So I, obviously, we, this just came to us yesterday. So were they just not, did they not supply their, or submit this in time for us to have it prior to this? And if that condition that the chief put on there with six officers goes back to them, then they should have already set up, have six officers in place for tomorrow, if they knew.
So we were waiting on one more staff approval, um, and we didn't get that until Wednesday. So that's why it was, we were waiting until all of staff approved before we put it on the agenda.
Gotcha. So they didn't get it back with the condition?
They don't receive, um, the certificate with the conditions until it's been approved by council.
So they just got it yesterday, or possibly today?
They won't, they won't get it until tomorrow.
Oh, I see what you mean.
If council approves it.
I see what you mean. Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Questions?
Just to note that, uh, based on the discussion for the council, um, a motion to amend the hold harmless approval would be in order if you're looking at approving, uh, reduced scope of events.
Go ahead. Anybody interested in making that?
Just one quick legal consideration, too. So, um, you know, it's the governor's proclamation as force of law. Is the police department going to be in charge of enforcing six-foot social distancing at, at this as well? I, I mean, is, is the city, if we are providing law enforcement, city law enforcement to do this, are we placing ourselves in a position being liable for enforcing social distancing at an event like a concert?
We, I can tell you that we, we have the overtime details at Hy-Vee that we're not asked to do the social distancing at Hy-Vee during the height of this, and it's, I would think would be similar.
So just, just to be clear, the, the distancing is still a requirement under the governor's, um, directives?
I believe it is, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mrs. Sternad.
I, I just, I, I guess I want to bring light to this because it concerns me greatly to think that we're providing service. I realize this is not the city's payroll dollars, but we're using resources from the city. So these are individuals that have already been clocking overtime, and now we're going to allow them to work a detail in this capacity, which could potentially hinder them in their day-to-day job on their hourly, on their normal payroll. That concerns me a little bit. If we had the, the manpower to do this, then that's a different story. But in this case here, we're already asking officers that have been working overtime at this point, and, uh, you know, if we can't fill that role of six, I think this is just a huge administrative issue that's being transferred to the burden of the city, and I don't like it. Not at all. You want to hire third-party security to do this and assure us that there's not going to be problems, and if you uh, break that, we can, uh, un, unban this entire thing, but we're talking about four live bans before the council comes back together to reevaluate this thing. We're third into that entire request here. I just, and I don't like the fact that it was brought in twelve hours or twenty-four hours before the council to make a decision on this. It's, it's, I understand their position. I'm, I sympathize with these as well, too, but, um, I just think there's a due process and we're, once again, we're, we're stepping out of the bounds of that. I strongly, uh, feeling this is going beyond what the city's capacity should do.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Goodella.
I just have a question related to the officers and overtime. I know that, I understand there's some protests scheduled for Saturday.
Yes.
Are we going to have officers working overtime for those events? No, okay.
Yes.
So this is more of a housekeeping question because I don't know how it works with payroll and the officers. When they're hired or used for this type of situation, and does it count towards their, what they worked for the week as far as their pay, or is this completely separate and they're just doing, getting hired off the, off?
Completely separate. It's considered an extra job. So we cover our cost, plus we built in like two percent to cover, um, the taxes and things like that.
So it wouldn't cause overtime by them doing this?
No.
Okay, thank you. Just wasn't sure.
Yes, Steve.
Well, we talked earlier about allowing us to maybe start off for the first two, uh, events on six nineteen, June nineteenth and twentieth, and then July third and fourth. But in just listening to all of this discussion, uh, it's going to seem, number one, I agree, we're talking about this coming to us at twelfth hour, and to say they're gonna, we're going to prove this for tomorrow, and there's a concern whether we can have the appropriate number of police officers available. And I believe on, in the future, a number of those police officers, a certain number of them like seeing this overtime. At least I've been with one, riding with one, that, that plans on a certain amount of overtime during the year, okay? So to that extent, I don't have quite as big a concern as, as Councilman Sternad. But I'm, I'm questioning whether we should even consider June nineteenth and twentieth, since we're talking tonight and this is tomorrow. I would be reluctant to do that, uh, given everything else is going on, and just started with the July, I would, just the only one, July third and fourth. We got one to look at by the time we have our next council meeting. I'd be personally more in support of that than allowing the one for this Friday, Saturday. So they may not like that, but, um, I think that their planning has to be done a little bit better than bringing it to us, you know, uh, this late in the game.
Sure.
I don't know what everybody else feels.
Yes, Ms., Mr. Harper?
I, I agree with that approach. Uh, bypass this very first one on six nineteen and six twenty. Get all the necessary preparations put in place for seven three seven four.
Do we know how they already made their plans, paid a band for?
I do not know.
I mean, no.
Concern.
Yeah, well, I mean, it seems that the delay may not have been from them, though. I mean, when did they submit their application?
Your honor, I have it here. It says, uh, seven, no, excuse me, I'm sorry, that's, that's the date of the submission to us, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the date is, oh.
I know it initially went back and forth between department heads because they didn't have drawings, and we didn't know where the
Okay, so.
If we needed a fence, uh, so it got kicked back and forth.
So there was some, some of the delay was because they didn't provide the right information?
Initially.
For staff decisions, okay.
We received on April twenty-ninth.
April twenty-ninth, what?
It was, it was still when there was, um, restrictions, and so we, um, I mean, that's when, when restaurants were still closed. So, uh, we didn't move forward with it because we didn't know when they were going to be allowed to open.
Okay.
And I, I believe the concern, too, about the, if they've already booked a band, this is for the outdoor venue, they could have a band inside if they needed to.
Right.
I believe. I'm, I'm no bar owner, but if I'd already paid a deposit for a band, I'd just move them inside if I had to.
This is, Mr. Brandt, sorry.
I'll just, uh, I, I agree to a point with what we're saying about, uh, not doing it on tomorrow and Saturday. But if we did allow it, the condition is in there that six officers have to be there. So if six officers aren't available, they can't do it.
Yep.
So I would be okay with letting it go this weekend, as long as the conditions are met. Okay.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to amend this current motion and approve only, approve the following hold harmless agreement for cocktails and company bands in the parking lot for only June nineteenth, June twentieth, and July third and July fourth, contended upon the requirement of having a minimum of six police officers available onsite.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the motion that is on the, uh, on the floor to approve cocktails and company bands in the parking lot only for June nineteenth and June nineteenth and twentieth, and July third and fourth, with the condition that there would be a minimum of six officers onsite. Okay. Is that accurate for the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's the motion. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Yes, sir.
So my question would be, going forward with them, if they want to continue, that everything's fine, the next, these first two events, um, they would have to, I assume, apply another whole, for another hold harmless for the future events?
I would say that administratively, since the dates are contained in this one, we wouldn't make them, um, fill out a whole new application. We'd bring this one back forward unless, based on, uh, what happens with the events, uh, we were recommending some changes.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion to amend? Yes, Ms. Atkins?
I don't know if I can ask this, but I'm going to try. I write this motion if I'm in the right time to ask, but we'll see. So the idea that they need to have six officers, I, I understand that. I guess what I want to know is, is there a, is there sort of the pressure that the officers will have to right, participate in this event? Do you see where I'm going with this? Is, um, I support this moving forward, right, for these, the dates that are listed? If, um, it's not sort of a, where you're going to your officers, not that, that you do that, right, and they feel a sense that they have to do it. It's tomorrow, um, as opposed to, they really want to do it because they want to make some extra dollars, right? So I just, I don't know if there's a way to talk about that or give us some insights into that.
We have a lot of officers that, uh, like Councilman Jensen said, we have a lot of officers that like the overtime. I, I don't think I'll have a problem finding six. Uh, the other part of it is, I know they've got the hours from ten AM to ten PM or eleven AM. I'm, I'm guessing that eleven AM is like a setup time, and the music probably wouldn't start, or the crowds wouldn't start till five or six, so that cuts down.
Okay.
Uh, when we would actually have to be there, and I, I don't think we'll have an, an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other, uh, questions or discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, we'll vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor of amending the motion on the floor to read approval of the hold harmless agreement for cocktails and company bands in the parking lot for only June nineteenth through twentieth and July third and fourth. for only June 19th through 20th and July 3rd and 4th with the condition that a minimum of six police officers be onsite. Okay? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All those abstaining, say aye.
Aye.
We have one abstention and the motion to amend has been approved. Now we will vote on the amended motion. The amended motion again reads approval of the hold harmless agreement for cocktails and company band in the parking lot June 19th and 20th and July 3rd and 4th with the condition of at least six police officers onsite. That's the amended motion. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, we'll vote on the amended motion. All those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. All those abstaining, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion has been approved with one abstention.
Your honor, I move to approve the following, oop, wrong item. Move to approve the following Merrill, Merrill appointment for the library board. Seth Moomy, 1025 South 15th Street in Marion. Term expires 6/30/24.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the appointment of Seth Moomy to the library board for a term expiring on June 30th, 2024. Discussion, I will again add that I've spoken with Mr. Moomy. And I'm supporting his appointment, so. Yes, Mr. Brandt.
Just add that I think that's a good appointment.
Yeah. Excuse me. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to appoint Seth Moomy to the library board for a term expiring June 30th, 2024, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. All those abstaining, please say aye.
Aye.
We have one abstention. The motion has been approved.
Your honor, I move to approve the following liquor license. Renewal Big Shots Bar and Grill, 1803 Sixth Avenue. Class C liquor license with additional privileges of outdoor service and Sunday sales. No violations in previous five years.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve liquor license renewal for Big Shots Bar and Grill at 1803 Sixth Avenue. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve liquor license renewal for Big Shots Bar and Grill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. All those abstaining, please say aye.
Aye.
We have one abstention and the motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion authorizing the city manager to engage with an executive search form, search firm for the deputy city manager position.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to engage with an executive search firm for the deputy city manager position. Discussion? Ms. Gudela.
Yes, these, this one and the next one are not new, but I'll still be abstaining because I had requested information that I believe was sent out, the org charts. But again, I haven't had time to review them, so I'll be abstaining on the next two items.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Harper?
It, it occurred to me in reviewing those supplemental materials that were sent out, looking at the organizational charts, that the city manager position is a, is a single person dependency at this point in time. And from a operational continuity standpoint, why I never like to think about things happening to individuals. It seems to me this is a pretty, having the deputy in place would ensure that we have continuity operations for the, the level of leadership in the organization. So that was an important feature that came to my mind.
Mrs. Sternad?
I would, I guess I would like to ask the question, as I was reviewing this as well too. I, I questioned, I questioned the idea of, wouldn't possibly the HR position even have a higher ranking and filling? Because they are obviously both critical positions. And we've talked about some other ones that I think you're waiting to obviously get the HR to move forward with those positions. But in this case here, I'm thinking, wouldn't it make sense? Or even just for some conversation, that we could consider maybe using those resources to get the HR individual? And then at that end, HR individual then could assist you in getting the qualified resource or resources for the deputy position. I realize using an outside source would help, but I was wondering if that would be a stronger model by having an HR helping make that selective decision. I just wanted to kind of hear your thoughts on that line.
Yeah, we actually have the HR position posted now. I believe it closes on the 24th, so then we'll start moving through that selection process to get that person onboard. Depending on how long it takes to coordinate interviews and bring them in. And then depending on when they're available, we may not have somebody in that position until, you know, August, September, depending on commitments to current employers. And with this one, the, while the HR director could conceivably do some of those things, I was looking for a way to be able to keep this one moving forward. And with this position in particular, it's more outward facing than the HR one is. With HR, I felt comfortable coordinating that one on my own. The biggest thing though, that the consultants bring to the table with these is that they know the candidates that are looking, but not really looking. Because they might be out there and, you know, looking for that particular fit or that one job. It's the people that they meet at conferences or the ones that applied here, but didn't get that position, but is looking for something specifically like this. So it, it widens your net beyond what an HR director working in the organization would have because of the professional network and contacts they have that are particular to this profession. So that was really one of the biggest strengths that I was looking for them to be able to bring to the table to help us with the search. You know, again, with this one for me, just so the council knows, I'm not in a particular feeling like there's a particular urgency to complete it just for the sake of completing it. It's more important for me to make sure that we do it right and get the right candidate than it is to do it quickly.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I guess I wasn't, I didn't realize that we were as far along with the applications on the HR side there. So obviously you must feel comfortable that we didn't need to go beyond our scope for an HR candidate for that. So second question I have on this one here too, because I was looking at the numbers associated with this. Does this come under your department then as far as from the budget standpoint for this? I know we talked about a couple of other options that would be there as set fee or a percentage of first year salary on that. Where, where, where does that come from?
In this case, what we would do is since I'm not anticipating that the position will be filled for a while, it's budgeted for the entire fiscal year. So what we are not going to use for salary and benefits for July into August, potentially into September, would cover the cost of the consultant.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes.
You said hopefully HR in place, August, September. What's your thought as far as, how long does this executive firm take to find someone? And then all goes correctly or smoothly, someone in place?
I think when I look at this, it will probably take around a month to get the position profile solidified, which is your advertising materials, the full write up of the community, the characteristics that you're looking for for the person to be successful in the position. From then, advertising for four to six weeks. We'll get some guidance from the consultant on the period that they'd like to keep that open. And then probably about a month after that for coordinating interview schedules. I do anticipate we'll use a process much like we did with the police chief, where we have community panels, staff panels, economic development partner panels. That was, you know, I think we had 22 to 24 people involved in the interview process. So coordinating schedules can be a challenge. So the actual active search piece, interviews, about 60 days. And then it just depends on if they have any obligations for an extended notification to a current employer for when they'd be able to start. But all, you know, all in, around 90 days start to finish.
Other discussion? All those in favor of the motion authorizing the city manager to engage with an executive search firm for the deputy city manager position, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. All those abstaining, please say aye.
Aye.
We have one abstention and the motion has been approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to receive and file job description for deputy city manager.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to receive and file the job description for the deputy city manager. Discussion?
Mayor, I would just note for the record that to, in deference to Councilwoman Gudela's comments, this piece would need to be updated before we would put the position profile out. So if the council collectively would like more time to review it and weigh in, if you felt there were any tweaks, we could move this one to the July, first set of meetings in July, if you just wanted more time to weigh in on it.
Would the motion be to table it or?
You'd do a motion to table then. We can certainly discuss it now if anybody has any particular changes they'd like to make, but I just wanted to offer that up.
Okay.
Again, I want, this is a critical position. I want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with what's in there as we move forward with the recruitment.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take discussion on this item, including any, if anyone's inclined to make a motion to table it. You can also, also. Anyone? Any discussion?
If there are no discussions, your honor, I would like to make a motion to table this. I would like a little bit more time to review this. I know personally, as the city manager said, that this is a critical. We've, we've been working on a couple of job descriptions and a lot of details. So unless there's any discussion, I will make the motion to table it for further conversations so that we can circle back.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to table the motion to receive and file the job description for the deputy city manager position. The discussion on the motion to table, Ms. Gudela?
Yeah, thanks Lon for making that offer. I appreciate that and making the motion, guys. Thanks.
Okay, other discussion? We're voting on whether or not to table the motion. All those in favor of tabling the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. All those abstaining? Motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to request the park board to designate the 11th Street right of way as a special use area.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to request the park board to designate the 11th Street right of way as a special use area. This is a new item and I would just ask the city manager to discuss that and the reason.
Yeah, as we've really had a chance to look at the results from the citizen survey that Amber and the task force coordinated, it's been very clear that people feel more comfortable in dining and patronizing businesses when they have outdoor service areas. So we've had a series of conversations with Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce about ways that we could potentially enhance that in the uptown area. And so this area on 11th Street was actually vacated as right of way. And so it's public property at this point, but it does not have the special restrictions that come with right of way. And so what this motion would do is actually ask the park board to grant it a special use designation. That's the same designation that the uptown artway has. And so businesses in the uptown would then be able to use this area. The concept that the chamber and Main Street have talked about is being able to have like numbered tables. And so if someone wants to come up and place an order with Bistro, they can say, I'm at table 12. They can order from Bistro 319 and then they can deliver it to that area. So it really enhances the potential availability of additional seating. There are some technical details that we still need to continue to work out. Like if we close down the, any of the parking area, well, our ADA spots are in that area. We have to provide an alternate location for an ADA spot. So the parks department would look at doing a phased in approach, starting with the area around the old bus stop to begin with. With appropriate spacing between the tables, we can get eight in that area alone. So again, I know this one came up on us quickly. If it wasn't for the fact that this is one of those times of the year where we have three weeks in between city council meetings, we just wanted to make sure that we did not lose that potential opportunity and some of our best weather when we have a chance to potentially support some of the uptown businesses, especially in light of how many of them are new.
This essentially creates a common dining area, outdoor dining area with a potential for that for a temporary period to just, because the restaurants in, in being required to distance tables in, inside are losing capacity as well as patrons are more comfortable eating outdoors is what we're learning. And you can see that the restaurants that have outdoor areas are, are doing, doing well in those, in those outdoor seating areas. So this is just one, one creative way to help businesses to make it through this period.
So yeah, I love the idea, but can you just clarify? What I think you said is that initially, the parking that is there will be as it is today. And that'll only be changed if there's a higher demand for tables other than what the eight tables can, can do on the sidewalk and bus stop area. Is that correct?
We want to start with the area around the bus stops. And we'll see how successful it is. But we do want to preserve the ability then to expand into those other areas without necessarily having to come back and talk about it. It's just, as I said, there are some, some technical details that we really have to look into if that additional area is going to be used for that purpose. And just for clarification, I would point out that this is city owned property, which is, but we are also streamlining and creating a whole, much easier process for businesses that may want to enhance their own outdoor service areas as well. So while we're focusing up here, because this is city owned property, we are also going to make it easier for businesses that have parking lots or outdoor sections of their own to make those larger.
Is that through the proclamation?
Right, that was part of that.
Correct. I just wanted to make, make that clear. Explain why it's a decision for the parks board?
The parks board has the authority and the ability to designate areas as parks. So I know it gets a little bit fuzzy, but if you think about Waldo's Rock Parks, the council got involved because that was a dedication of land to the city. So the city council had to accept the property. But when you're putting something, designating an area as a park or a special use area, it falls into the purview of the parks board for operations and maintenance. So they have to have an opportunity to weigh in on that because it's their staff that are going to be involved in it. And because they have some day to day operational authority for setting priorities for the park staff, we need to make sure that we're not running roughshod over their ability to complete other projects.
The, the, the maintenance of that area is parks.
Correct.
Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure that everybody had that information because I'm sure people are wondering how to, so yes. Mrs. Sternad?
Lon, would, so then would the tables be standardized then? Will those be picnic tables provided by the city then? Or what, who, or will they have to provide their own tables and settings, chairs, et cetera for that? Or what, what would that look like if we proceed with that?
The park staff has, has several that because of our own social distancing they were observing, we're not able to use in some of our other locations. So they have identified some that we would be able to bring up. I would say that if, if the businesses would like to have something maybe a little fancier, like ones that would support umbrellas or something like that, ours do not do that. So they'd have to look at providing those. Additionally, I know that the chamber and Main Street have been having discussions with the adjoining building owners about providing supplemental lighting up in the area to, to make the environment a little bit better. And that would be using dollars that they would provide as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, Mr. Brandt?
That was part of my question. The other one would be as far as sanitation of these tables. Is that going to be on the business owner's responsibility? Or because you go to a restaurant now, you get, when someone gets up and leaves, they've come by, cleaned the table before they sit someone else. So I have more questions after that.
Yeah, we would, we would follow the same protocols that we do in our parks locations or the uptown artway.
So it's, you're on your own basically. Tell me more about the being vacated. So is it just this section has been vacated? Tell me more about the being vacated. So is it just this section has been vacated? Or has from 8th to 7th been vacated, the whole street?
The ordinance that Rachel found, the entirety of the whole area between 7th and 8th avenues has been vacated. Additionally, between 6th and 7th was fully vacated as well.
And that, does that include the section of the alley that's been vacated too, that's on this?
No, that was done as a separate action. That was more recent.
But it is vacated.
It was vacated, yes.
I do remember that now. Yes. Okay.
They're not public right of way, but they're public property.
Is that, sorry, continue. Does that affect it being used as a parking lot or technically being 11th Street anymore?
What it does, it has a couple of impacts, but the difference between right of way and public property is fairly subtle. But for example, a utility company has an inherent right to use the public right of way to be able to install utilities. They do not have that same right on public property. Additionally, if we need them to move it, if it's on right of way, we can compel them to move it if we're, we're doing a street project. Even if you remember when city attorney Bullerman was working on the parade and demonstrations ordinance, there are rights to be able to assemble and organize in the public right of way that do not apply to public property. So it's, it's like this, the parking lot at City Hall, like the cat's lot, it's just a publicly owned parcel at this point. Still city ownership, still city maintenance, but not considered to be right of way.
That was my next question, city maintenance. So Ryan's still going to plow it. Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion? Okay. Go ahead and vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion to request the park board to designate 11th Street right of way or former right of way as a special use area. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. All those abstaining, please say aye.
Aye.
We have one abstention and the motion has been approved. On the public services.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 20-06, amending chapter 105 of the solid waste ordinance and establishing base monthly collection fees at $17.50. This will be for the final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 20-06, amending chapter 105 of, of the solid waste ordinance establishing base monthly collection fees at $17.50. Discussion? All those in favor of approving ordinance number 20-06, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve ordinance number 20-07, amending the chapter 99 of the sanitary sewer ordinance, increasing monthly domestic and industrial user charges from $3.80 to $4.10 and establishing new construction sanitary sewer connection fees at $2,000. This is final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 20-07, amending chapter 99 of the sanitary sewer ordinance, increasing monthly domestic and industrial user charges from $3.80 to $4.10 and establishing new construction sanitary sewer connection fees at $2,000. This is the final consideration. Discussion? I have a question and I may have heard it incorrectly on Tuesday. So this, this is new construction sanitary sewer connection fees, but I thought on Tuesday, someone asked a question and it was, the answer was, it's not necessarily new construction. It's people hooking up for the first time. Yeah. Would you like to answer the question? What? If you, if you would like to answer the question, it'd be great. I just want to be sure everybody's clear because this says new construction and if we need to.
It is the way the ordinance was written by Kara Bullerman, city attorney Bullerman, is that it, it, it does include new construction, but also in the ordinance also includes any new hookups. They're not addressed through annexation and or new development agreements. So in the ordinance body, we are addressing that. So for instance, if we are annexing someone out in the county, typically they're on a septic. If at some point, some point they do hook up and they're not defined within that annexation agreement, a hookup charge, they will be paying those fees.
I appreciate the clarification. So I, I guess I would just make, make sure everybody understands this is for new connections, not necessarily new construction.
Typically with new connections, they are addressing an annexation or new development agreement. So typically those will be in that. These are addressing a new construction, but we do have that outlined in the ordinance.
Okay. Okay. So this is accurately written. I just want to be sure. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Yes, sir. Mr. Harper?
Yeah, just a follow on question to that. If we annex an area, and this has been exposed a little bit of my ignorance here, a lot to expose. What, if somebody wants to remain on their septic system, can they do that?
They can and Mr. Barklow could probably answer this better than I can. They can remain on their septic system as long as it's functioning. I believe if they're within, if it fails, if they're within 250 feet, the sanitary sewer, they have to connect at that point. That's really up to Lynn County at that point, but I believe that's what it is. Mike probably answered that better than I did.
Yeah. So I actually just had a call with Lynn County Public Health today on one. If their septic fails, then, and they're within a certain distance of the sanitary sewer, they are required to tie in at a city sewer. If their septic fails, and for example, today's was 700 feet away from the main, they are not required and they can fix their septic system. So it is actually up to Lynn County Public Health whether they have to tie in or not.
Okay. Thank you. But even within this, within the city jurisdiction, Lynn County, oh, because it's a septic system. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I got it. Anyone clear? Okay, go ahead.
Just to ask Mike, would our, would an annexation agreement trump that requirement by the Lynn County to be within so many feet? So like the annexation agreement said that no matter what, once your septic fails, you have to tie in.
In the annexation agreement, we would specify that it's per what Lynn County Public Health says.
But we would never try to trump that in an agreement.
No, there's typically more charges for them because not only do we have to have the connection fee, we have to run the sewer to them. So that's part of their access fee as well.
I was just going to point out, I believe, I have to pull the agreement up just to verify. But like in the case of the area of Shady Oak, when we annexed that, I believe their connection fees were stipulated in that agreement at 5,000.
Okay. Other discussion? All right, we will vote. All those in favor of approving the final consideration of ordinance number 20-07, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number 28571, approving partial payment number two to Midstates Concrete regarding the precast concrete package for the public service maintenance facility in the amount of $1,641,021.62.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28571, approving partial payment number two to Midstates Concrete regarding the precast concrete package for the public service maintenance facility in the amount of $1,641,021.62. Discussion?
Great question.
Yes.
Yeah. What percentage of their total contract is this payment? I'm sure it's in the document here, but could you answer that real quick?
This will, the total contract is, is close to 2.3 million. So yeah, that's, so we're going to be about 75%.
Okay.
So we'll have two to three payments left. And just so clarity with the council, this is for the precast. Our precast is already made. It's sitting in South Beloit right now in storage. And so they, they, they manufactured this back in February. So we are executing payment on this.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor of resolution number 28571, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28572, approving partial payment number one to Delta III Engineering for engineering services related to the public service maintenance facility in the amount of $20,182.50.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28571, approving partial payment number one to Delta III Engineering for services related to the public service maintenance facility in the amount of $20,182.50. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number 28572, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28573, approving partial payment number two to Delta III Engineering for engineering services related to the public service maintenance facility in the amount of $16,962.50.
Second.
It has been moved by council member Brent, seconded by council member Gudela to approve resolution number 28573, approving partial payment number two to Delta III Engineering for services related to the public service maintenance facility in the amount of $16,962.50. Discussion? All, all those in favor of resolution number 28573, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved. It's time we have a public hearing regarding the 2020 HMA resurfacing project. The public hearing is open. And we have city engineer Markolo making a presentation.
Yeah. So this is the 2020 HMA resurfacing project. We did receive one bid from L.L. Pelling for $1,82,991.50. This does include nine streets, one of which we have a 28E agreement where Lynn County will reimburse us approximately $100,000 for the Seacrest Road segment. Work is to be completed in later than October 23rd of 2020, and there are liquidated damages in the amount of $300 per day each calendar day after.
At this time, we will take comments from the public regarding this measure. Has there been any comments received?
I have not received any.
Okay. Did your department receive any comments prior to the meeting? Okay. Please note that for the record. And we'll wait a couple of seconds to see if, if anyone is sending in a comment. I think.
Nope.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem for this next resolution.
Yes, your honor, I move to approve resolution number 28574, accepting bids and awarding contract to L.L. Pelling Company, Inc. regarding the 2020 HMA resurfacing project in the amount of $1,82,991.50.
Second.
You've got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28574. Is there any further comments or discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving resolution number 28574, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Resolution passes with one abstention. With the mayor, meeting back to the mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28575, approving the agreement with the Young Men's Christian Association of Cedar Rapids Metropolitan Area, YMCA, for the maximum sanitary discharge rate and time.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28575, approving the agreement with the YMCA for the maximum sanitary discharge rate and time. Discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number 28575, please say aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Your honor, I move to, to approve resolution number 28576, approving a 28E agreement with Lynn County regarding the intersection of South 31st and Highway 100 traffic signal project.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28576, approving the 2080 agreement with Lynn County for the intersection of South 31st and Highway 100 traffic signal project. Discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number 28576, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number 28577, approving a 28E agreement with Lynn County regarding the Winslow Road Improvements Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28577, approving the 28E agreement with Lynn County regarding Winslow Road Improvement Project. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number 28577, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved. On the next item, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number 28578, approving the requirement for traffic signals to be installed at the intersection of Highway, Highway 151 and 62nd Street. And for said signals to be installed prior to the temporary or full occupancy of the Quick Star with trip number 589900 block of 62nd Street.
Second.
Excuse me, we've got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28578 related to the traffic signals for the new Quick Star truck stop out on 62nd Street. Any more questions or comments from the city council?
I do have, I will actually be voting on this one. Yeah. It's, I thought it was, I thought it was something else.
Okay. Okay, any other comments? Okay. All those in favor of approving resolution number 28578, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Back to the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Back to the mayor, yes. Sorry.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 20-09, amending chapter 175, section 175.07 of the code of ordinances related to subdivision regulations, maintenance bonds, initial consideration.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number 20-09, amending chapter 175, section 175.07 of the code of ordinances relating to subdivision regulations, maintenance bonds. Discussion? All those in favor of ordinance number 20-09, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved. Thank you, Mike.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number 28579, approving contract extension with Synergy Metal, sorry, Synergy Metalwork, Metalworks on behalf of Kara Briggs Farmer for the artistic design of the gateway feature associated with the Seymour Trail Bridge over Marion Boulevard from November 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022, and approving the final artistic design of said gateway feature.
Second. It has been moved by council member Gudela, seconded by council member Harper to approve resolution number 28579, approving the contract extension with Synergy Metalworks for the artistic design of the gateway feature associated with the Seymour Trail Bridge over Marion Boulevard from November 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2022, and approving the final artistic design for the gateway feature. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 28579, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28580, approving the contract amendment number one with Shoemaker and Holland Professional Engineers Incorporated regarding engineering services associated with the Seymour Trail from Cedar Rapids city limits near 33rd Street Southeast. near Thirty-third Street Southeast to Seventh Street in Marion in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, sixty-six dollars and two cents.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Sternad, seconded by Councilmember Atkins, to approve resolution number two eight five eight zero, approving the contract amendment number one with Shoemaker-Holland Professional Engineers regarding services associated with the Seymour Trail from Cedar Rapids City Limits near Thirty-third Street Southeast to Seventh Street in Marion in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, sixty-six dollars and two cents. Discussion? Okay. All those in favor of resolution number two eight five eight zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. At this time, we have a time set aside in our meeting for public forum, comments from the public. Do we have any, on any item that was, on any item?
Yeah, we do have Lonnie Henderson at four one two eight. We'll just have to allow them to speak here.
Welcome. Lonnie Henderson?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I was wondering if anyone can tell me anything more about Police Chief Kitz Miller's mention in the Cedar Rapids Gazette recently that he would be interested in entertaining the idea of having a public citizens, a police task force, I should say. And I know with recent events, there have been a lot of questions about policing and police reforms. I know that, I hope I'm saying this right, Zakara Stokes of the Advocates of Social Justice is making some police reform demands of the Cedar Rapids Police Department and is making the same demands of the Marion Police Department. I'm wondering if any of you know anything about that or can speak to it or could tell me how I might find out more about that.
So is that something that the police chief can reach out to her separately? Or how we, I mean, this is a time for comments, but not really, not?
I do have an email address, so I could give that to the chief.
I would just...
So I've actually had an exchange of emails with the chief. And at that time, let's see, what date was that? It was on June fourth. And at that point, he said that he was not, not all in favor of having an appointed citizens review board. But in the working session on Tuesday, he indicated that he might be open to that idea and maybe some others. So I'm just trying to figure out how I might get more information on that, what next steps might be.
Yeah, at this point, the city has not received anything, at least not in my office. I don't know if anything's been received directly by the chief of police. I do know that there's an event that's organized over the weekend and that we may potentially, I think, receive something after that. And I don't want to speak for Chief Kitz Miller, but I think the comment on Tuesday was that, that he didn't personally think that with the statistics in our department, that a citizens oversight committee was required. But if it was something that the community at large had a strong desire for, that he was certainly willing to make it happen. Is that accurate? Okay, thank you.
Great, very much.
Sure, and feel free to email us any additional questions you have or requests for any information, or we're happy to accommodate that for sure.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who have asked to speak?
I have not received any others.
None, okay. Okay, with that, then we will proceed to council comments. We'll start with Councilmember Harper. Anything to?
Yes, just one comment, Your Honor. I want to thank Public Service, Fire, Parks and Recreation, the Police Department for the great tours that they provided me and the discussion that we had about the operations of each of those departmental areas. I was impressed with the combination of essential capabilities that each of those areas offer to the community and also the amenities that they support relative to the, to the city. So I wanted to say thank you to all, all of those involved, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey. Councilmember Goodella?
None, thank you.
Mr. Brandt?
I just want to give a thanks to all the city staff, not just directors, but the whole staff. Was it this week? Or maybe it was last week where we, Friday and Monday, right? Yeah, Friday and Monday, we delivered out some goodies to all the staff and hopefully they enjoyed those. But just thank you, appreciation for all that they do, especially during the pandemic that's going on right now.
Ms. Atkins?
No comment.
I, thank you, Your Honor. I as well too would like to thank, we won't have that opportunity to face-to-face this year, but thank the city employees and the staff. There's certainly been a, a year to put in our history books as to the way we got through this and everybody making sacrifices to make those changes. So thank you, thank you to the hard work and the extra efforts. There was extra time, schedules were messed up, and families were disturbed just a little bit, obviously, from the normal routine that we experienced to this point. So a heartfelt thank you. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Jensen?
Yeah, mine's very brief. I wish a happy Father's Day to all those fathers out there for this Sunday and hope the weather is nice enough, we can do a lot of grilling. So that's it, all right.